I'd like to call the order of the meeting of the Village Board for June 21st, 2022. Could you please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Village Clerk, would you please call the roll?
President DeSimone?
Here.
Trustee Carmona?
Here.
Trustee Franz?
Here.
Trustee Frye?
Here.
Trustee Lomax?
Here.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Here.
Trustee Perez?
Here.
That's seven.
At this time, we will move to public comment. Does anyone wish to address the board? And if so, please approach the podium and state your name.
Yes, we have three. Michael Jaffe?
Thank you, Mayor and trustees. My name's Michael Jaffe. My son bought a house recently in White Pines. The sewer connection near the street is broken. I'm helping him with this issue. I want to thank Joe Karachi for his help. I met with Joe, who thoroughly explained and wrote out what should be done to fix the problem. He also went through with me the five bids I received. Joe explained to me that he was doing his job, but I think that he went above and beyond for the help he gave me, and for that, I want to say thank you. There was a problem with the permit process. My son received some incorrect information. I also want to say thank you to Evan Summers and Mary Rabando for their help in resolving the sewer issue. I greatly appreciate the way both of them handled the difficult situation. And thank you to Curtis Posegay for his help with remedying the situation. I appreciate a Curtis. And now, onto my favorite topic, which I wish it wasn't, and I'm guessing, Mayor, it's your least favorite topic, is White Pines. Three times in my life, I've gotten involved in politics. In 1984, I made phone calls in support of the Honorable Late Senator Paul Simon. In 1992, my wife and I lived in Des Plaines. The mayor wanted to go from part-time to full-time with a big increase in salary. The first time I ever spoke at a Village Board meeting, I said to the mayor, if he wanted to do that, it should be put to a binding referendum, which it was. And anyway, thirty years later, I'm saying basically the same thing, but this issue is about White Pines. When I'm passionate about a topic, I'm all in. In the year 2021, the Village of Bensonville received the distinction of being a Tree City, USA, for the thirtieth year. Mayor and trustees, you get it. I know the Park District doesn't if they go ahead with bulldozing White Pines, putting in a hotel, industrial buildings, thirteen soccer fields, and more. Keeping our green space is vital. I have an email and a statement. I passed around in a poster that I created. I have an email and statement I received from the Honorable Representative Kathleen Willis urging the Park District to show full transparency and urging the district to consider a referendum. Please look at my poster showing industrial buildings surrounding White Pines with a snake squeezing out the green space in the middle of our beautiful residential community. The influx of industrial buildings has no place in the center of our village. I task and Medina are dealing with similar issues. They're going up all over the place, South suburbs, too. I was out there yesterday. Mayor and trustees, I urge you to never allow rezoning of White Pines to industrial. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
The next person up is Reed Goodrich.
Hi, my name is Reed Goodrich, and while I realize my topic isn't directly related to the trustees, I appreciate the forum you for allowing me to let me state my opinion on this. I'm from Wooddale, but I share the taxing district with Fenton, with Bensonville. And I'm here to speak against the referendum. Fenton has been on a marketing blitz led by their superintendent, but there are a few things you're not being told. I went to the May 16th open house. Let's talk about the money. I ask a few questions. The 129.7 million number is a result of a poll taken to gauge how much money Fenton could obtain in a referendum. It's not the result of qualified quotes to create a realistic budget buildup that you and I may have to do out here in the public sector, or if we had a boss that wanted accurate information. The consultant then backfilled the dollars to go with the expense category after they had a number, and consequently gives it the look of some credibility. Fenton has $20 million of unrestricted cash in the bank that they refused to apply to the construction cost, and so lower the bond request. There were no assurances that excess bond funds would be used to pay down the bond debt and reduce the cost to the taxpayer. When I asked where the remainder of the money would go, and I received no answer. The consultant made a comment that ninety percent of the people don't understand the real estate taxes, and so implied this will get by the voters. Let us hope not. A home valued at $350,000, which is not out of the ordinary in today's market, will face an increase of $550 a year in additional property taxes. A $450,000 valued house will increase $800 a year. And this is right off Trenton's own tax calculator, and if anybody's interested, I can prove that out. I do not believe this referendum is in the best interest of the taxpayers. I encourage you to discuss this with your neighbors, and those opposed to the referendum to please vote. The forces behind their effort will have their people voting.
Mr. Goodrich has three minutes. Thank you.
And you will get the bill.
Thank you, Mr. Goodrich.
Thank you. Vote no to financial waste and vote no to the Fenton referendum. Thank you.
Mr. Paul DeMichael?
I am Paul DeMichael. I live in 17W 275 Rodeck. A little while ago, I started talking about a... Wait a minute. I'm sorry. Left my speech at the... I'm gonna cancel for tonight. I usually don't have a script, but tonight is special. A while ago, I came across a contract that was so spectacular, it needed illumination. It was the contract for the village manager's change from last contract to this contract. Aside from the stunning thing that he would no longer be required to live in the village, but could live in any one of six counties in Illinois, that seemed kind of irreconcilable with being a village manager. But anyway, the dollar impact of it was, he went from a salary base of $170,000 to $190,000. And on top of that, he gets a deferred compensation that went from six percent to seven and a half. That's money that's paid, but does not appear on a W-2. He gets a $400 a month car allowance, along with all the other benefits that a regular village employee has. This is an amazing contract, because if he doesn't get a review each year by January 1st from the president, he gets an automatic two and a half percent increase. This is wonderful. I'm sorry, I'm done.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
No, there's no one.
This concludes public comment. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the May 24th, 2022 Village Board meeting? You have a motion. There are second.
Second.
Are there any modifications to the minutes? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries. The minutes are approved. The next item of business is to approve the warrant in the amount of $2,695,113.37. Is there a motion to approve the warrant?
A motion.
There are second on the motion.
Second.
Any discussion on the warrant? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries. The warrant is approved. There are no items on the consent agenda. Under Community and Economic Development, there's an ordinance denying a variation for visibility at driveways and granting a variation for a fence in the corner side yard at 352 Briar Lane. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
You have a motion.
We have a second.
You have a second?
There being a motion and a second, we have discussion.
Your Honor, because it's the only meeting for June tonight, we're gonna try to move quickly, so if the board has any questions, please tell us to slow down. But I've asked the directors to give quick summations of every agenda item tonight, so we'll hand it off to Curtis for the community development items. Yeah, so pretty standard corner side yard fence in this case. The denial for the visibility at the driveway is because we require, they call it sight distance triangle, so it's ten by ten triangles, so you can see coming in and out of the driveway. So we denied the visibility, so you can't put the fence right up against the driveway, so they can see people in the sidewalk coming in and out. CDC did vote 5-0 to recommend approval.
Any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and ordinance is passed. Two is an ordinance granting approval of a site plan and a preliminary and final planned unit development with code departures for a restaurant and drive-through at 1301 West Irving Park Road. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance? You have a motion? A second.
You have a second.
There being a motion and a second, we have discussion.
So this is a redevelopment of that small gas station on Irving Park Road. This is for a cilantro taco grill. You might be familiar with them. They're in the area. They are expanding. This is gonna be a great development. This is a planned due development. There are multiple code departures here, just given the situation with the site. So if you have any questions about any of those, we can go over them. The CDC did recommend approval, 5-0 on this one, and looking for your approval.
Cilantro's here. You guys got anything you want to say or comment on what's going on?
You don't have to.
You don't have to.
We can, if you'd like us to.
It's completely up to you.
Yeah, the property, as you know, has been vacant for quite some time. Cilantro is in the area, and we wanted to bring a nice addition to the Bensonville community to serve the residents with a fresh taco concept and beautify that corner, which has been dormant for quite some time, as a closed-down gas station. So with the board's approval, we would like to proceed with the development of that project and bring something about into the community.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and ordinance is passed. Three is an ordinance granting approval of a site plan and an amendment to a planned unit development for an expansion of outdoor storage facilities and a new parking lot at 900 through 940 County Line Road. Is there a motion to approve this ordinance? You have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
Being a motion, a second is their discussion.
So this is for MTR. Been in the community for a few years now. They had, there was a small lot for sale south of their existing property. They purchased it. They are expanding. If you've been by there, they've got a lot of stuff on the site right now. Essentially, we're trying to help remedy that. So it's for outdoor storage to move a lot of the things that are on the lot now currently into a more appropriate location. Part of the public comment during the CDC was basically buffering the residential, so there's a lot of discussion in there about including a buffer in trees between the residential and the development, so we're taking that in consideration. CDC did vote 5-0 for approval.
Any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and ordinance is passed. Ordinance granting approval of a site plan and amendment to a planned unit development for addition to the existing building and a garage at 313 West Grand Avenue. Is there a motion to approve this ordinance?
So moved.
We have a second.
Second.
Being a motion and a second, Curtis, we have discussion on this.
Yes, this is Larry Roche Volkswagen. They are basically in the process of a sort of redesign from corporate, so part of that will be doing some renovations on the front, but they also are expanding. They were using some of the property next door at one of the other family members in the dealership next door, basically, so they're bringing that in-house, and then they're gonna add a garage for some storage on the back of the lot. This was approved 5-0 at CDC.
Any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and ordinance is passed. Five is an ordinance denying a variation for visibility at driveways and granting a variation for a fence in the corner side yard, corner side yard at 251 Marshall Road. Is there a motion to approve this ordinance? You have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
Being a motion and a second, Curtis, go ahead.
Same as the previous corner side yard fence, we denied the, next to the driveway, the fence location basically being in the site visibility triangle, but approved the fence overall. CDC did recommend approval of 5-0.
Any questions from the board? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and ordinance is passed. Six is an ordinance granting a variation for a fence in the corner side yard at 1,000 North Illinois Route 83. Is there a motion to approve? You have a motion? We have a second.
Second.
Being a motion and a second, discussion?
So this one's a little unique for a corner side yard, because it's an industrial property. Usually, we see them residential. If you've been by that new development at 1,083, it's basically three front yards. So in order to fence in their truck court, which is pretty common for industrial buildings, they needed to get the variance in the corner side. So that's what was approved 5-0 at CDC.
This is an upgraded decorative fence as well, too. It's not just a chain link fence.
Any questions from the board? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and ordinance is passed. Number seven is an ordinance granting variation for a paved parking area and visibility at driveways at 138 North York Road. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
We have a second.
Second.
Being a motion and a second, we have discussion?
So 138 North York is on a busy stretch of York Road. He has an alley, so they want to put a parking pad in the back and use that. It's not adjacent to the garage. The garage is actually up on the lot a little bit, so that goes against code. And then being on the alley next to an existing fence, we are allowing that. It's not the same as coming out onto a, you know, a sidewalk, basically. This was approved at CDC 5-0.
Questions from the board? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and ordinance is passed. Number eight is an ordinance approving text amendments to amend Title 10 zoning ordinance, Section 7, uses. Is there a motion to approve this ordinance?
You have a motion.
We have a second.
Second.
Being a motion and a second, we have discussion?
So real quick here, these are two, you know, from time to time, we're reviewing the code and looking at changes or possible changes. We are suggesting self-storage become a special use in C-2. It was currently not allowed at all. And then, for multi-unit dwellings in the downtown district, we're suggesting a special use. It was allowed by right, and we want to be, we want to make that a special use. We actually think that was sort of a mistake when we did the code, you know, a couple of years back. So two special uses being requested here, just minor changes in the code.
Questions from the board? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and ordinance is passed. Moving on to finance, informational item to be, we're gonna be presented, I guess, a certificate of achievements for excellence in financial reporting. Julie, Evan, you want to take the helmet?
Yeah, I'll let Julie explain what the award entails. We don't need to do a formal presentation tonight.
Right. Now, the award is just for the financial presentation, our annual, after our annual audit. It entails giving more information than the typical report would give, so that anybody could tell what the town looks like, what you're doing. We've won it, I think, since 2005, so it's been an award that's been here a long time.
This is informational. There's no further action. We're just letting you know.
Moving on, number two is a resolution authorizing a contract. No, none of that. Contract with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, ASME, Council 31. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion.
We have a second.
Second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
Details of this contract were circulated to the board via email. I received a few questions, and I will answer those. We're approving this tonight. I do want to thank our partners in the ASME Union, which represents mainly our public works as well as clerical staff. This was a six-month negotiation. Everyone stayed very professional throughout, and I think it's a good contract that represents the village's interests as well as the employees.
Questions? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and resolution is approved. We do not have a report on the police department on the public works. There's a resolution authorizing the termination of a lease agreement with the Roman Catholic Diocese of Joliet for a proposed senior center and community center located at 400 West Wood, St. Alexis Church. Is there a motion to approve? You have a motion?
Second.
Being a motion and a second, we have discussion on this, Ev?
We'll hand this off to Joe Karachi.
Actually, I'll take the next three items all on this one topic. They all relate to the senior center. As you're aware, we were looking at building a senior center over at the St. Alexis Church site. Our bids came in very high. We did not have the extra funding to do it, so at our April committee meeting, you directed staff to go and look at value engineering, look at some other funding options, and look at some alternate sites. We have done that. We're in a position right now to look at alternate sites. We have a couple in mind that we're gonna look at, but due to that, we are in a position now to go ahead and stop the progression on the St. Alexis Church. So that's gonna require three motions tonight, or three approvals tonight. One will be to get out of our lease with the St. Alex, or with the Diocese of Joliet for permission to use that site for the senior center. We have had discussion with them already, and they are okay with us breaking that lease. The second is gonna be a contract to actually do the construction. We bid that way over our expected amount, so we'll reject all bids for that and notify the contractors that bid. And then the third one is an abatement contract that was going to take care of some of the asbestos requirements to abate that site. So those are the three, next three items on the agenda.
Any questions from the board?
Just to be clear, I've, Joe and I've had good discussions of moving forward. We're gonna redouble our efforts. We think we've got some good ideas for where to move the senior center to. We're gonna flush those out, make sure it's achievable, and then Joe's gonna be released to, for quick construction. We want to get this delivered to our residents as soon as possible.
Cool. Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and resolution is approved. Two is a resolution authorizing the rejection of all bids for the proposed senior center construction contract located at 400 West Wood. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion?
We have a second.
Second.
Being a motion and a second, we just discussed this. Any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yep.
That's six.
Motion carries and resolution is approved. Resolution authorizing the rejection of all bids for the proposed senior center abatement contract located at 400 West Wood. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
We have a second.
Second.
Being a motion and a second, we did discuss this, so please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and resolution is approved. Four is a resolution authorizing the approval of a purchase order to G&amp;L Contractors Incorporated for the emergency repair of a box culvert located at 710 West Irving Park Road, and then not exceed an amount of $59,200. Is there a motion to approve? You have a motion? We have a second.
Second.
Being a motion and a second, Joe, we have discussion?
Yeah, so we talked about this one last month. This is the box culvert collapse over in front of the Cascade Banquets, trying to get that repaired. Unfortunately, the contract that we were looking to let last month when we approved it, the contractor or the engineer could not do the project because of bonding issues, so they recommended that we go and try to have the contractor as the lead agency, so that is what's before you today. G&amp;L Contractors is geared up to start working on the project. They were hoping to start it this week, but it looks like we're gonna get a Monday of next week's start. About two to three weeks' worth of work to get that culvert repaired, covered, and restored. So it's staff's recommendation to approve.
Any questions from the board? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and resolution is approved. Five is a resolution authorizing the execution of a purchase order to Metropolitan Pump Company for a purchase replacement of a Hydramatic Submersible Non-Clog Pump at the North Plant, and then not exceed an amount of $12,764. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Motion.
We have a second.
Second.
Being a motion and a second, Joe, we have discussion?
Basically, a pump failed. We're trying to replace it with the same pump. It costs $12,764 from the manufacturer, and staff recommends approval.
Questions? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and resolution is approved. Number six is a resolution waiving competitive bidding and authorizing the execution of a contract with Xylem Dewatering Solutions Incorporated for bypass pumping associated with the York Road Lift Station 10 Lift Station Station rehabilitation project and a not exceed amount of one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
We have a second.
Second.
Being a motion and a second. Joe, discussion?
So in order to do the repairs to the lift station, we are going to need to bypass the wastewater going around the lift station, and in order to do that, we set up a bypass pumping station. We did go out for proposals from four different firms, and Xylem Dewatering Solutions provided us the most economical and the best project moving forward. We did rebid this project initially because the cost of the dewatering and the bypass pumping from the general contractor was over four-hundred-thousand dollars, so it did benefit us to pull that out of the contract, rebid it, and go this route. So we are saving some money and going and contracting directly with a bypass pumping company. So it's our recommendation to move forward with a one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar contract, which provides a little bit of a contingency should anything go wrong with the bypass pumping.
Questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries. The resolution is approved. Seven is a resolution authorizing the approval of change order number two, final, with John Newery Construction Company Incorporated for the White Pines Water Main Rehabilitation Project for an increase of one-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand-seven-hundred-eight dollars, sixty-eight cents, resulting in a final contract amount of five-million-five-hundred-forty-eight-thousand-six-hundred dollars, twenty-three cents. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion?
We have a second.
You have a second.
Being a motion and a second, discussion.
So the White Pines project, Water Main project, is one-hundred percent complete. This is the final change order with final quantities. It's an increase of just over